Let's do this next.
All right, good morning. I call this meeting your word. I scan for you to stand to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the United Republic of which sustains on the nation and under God in this form of the creation of this broad.
All board members who receive the conference agenda, are there any changes or amendments? Hearing no discussion, we will proceed with a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? The agenda is adopted. And next is public commentary.
I don't think you're bringing that up.
Well, I'm sorry.
I make a motion to adopt.
Thank you. One of these days. Please do. I'm earning it every month. Thank you so much. So motion adopted has been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Appreciate that. Now? So moving on to the consent agenda.
I motion to adopt. I move to approve consent.
Okay. Second?
Can I ask a question?
After it's seconded.
After it's seconded, I second it.
Okay. And do we have any questions on the consent?
Um, yes. I wanted to find out on accounts payable that we had on page fifteen reservations of costing two eighty to eight hundred and forty-two dollars. Is why is there such a difference? It was the same, pretty much same book tabled. The highest I believe was what it was.
Page fifteen?
Uh, page fifteen.
Fifteen.
I think it was the last thing.
The financial here?
There's the a high at the first one was that two hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-four cents. Then it jumped to eight hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-two cents.
That could have been a ridiculous amount of rooms.
Yeah, rooms or days. Cause some people didn't go all.
So they only went one, one night and then finished others up with multiple. So it depends on how many nights the participants went. It was a three day conference. So that would have been for three evenings.
I see. So like the five, sixteen, four footed day.
That could have been two nights.
Okay. I just thought, wow.
Yeah, you know, no, there was one day, one to up to three nights.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, it looks like it's a bunch of different reservations all built separately.
Okay, and then again on the school budget on budget status. It was on page thirteen, line three. They have expenditures and yet the balance would increase, but I know that this ASB budget is quite weird because it's always showing minus.
Correct.
I just want to have that explained again.
So you're on page?
I did stat.
Yep, I got it.
Yeah. And on page what must be thirteen.
Yep.
So that's Monument ASB.
So you're asking why, why the negatives again?
Why if they have an expenditure, then the balance increases. You see that?
I do.
Like the third item?
Yeah.
Well, the third item was fundraising, so that's money from you can.
Says expenditures though.
Right, but it's got a negative sign in front of it.
They all.
It's the fund out. I can, I can do a deeper dive into that. I'm not really sure what's going on with that.
But it's.
There was a couple of government I house.
For that expenditure, so you spend that money though. And then maybe there's been. That'd be the negative plus the thousand. That's how long it's been, nine thousand.
Right, but I should have.
This.
The negative is actually positive. So the beginning balance is actually.
But it did not end wrong again.
So it should.
And then it's negative and it added it on and.
There are a few of those.
Could have gone down.
Okay.
There's a few of those in there.
I'm getting through.
Find out again.
No, I appreciate you asking because I didn't notice that. I will look at those. I'll have to actually ask the E S T because that's a U D report.
Okay, and then contracts and agreement. I always thought that the board was supposed to go through the contracts that we have for curriculum. But we never have. I just wonder why. I thought we were supposed to help be a part of that decision.
So we'll talk more about that tonight. So what we're paying for tonight is curriculum that's already been board approved and already adopted. So this is, this is our math curriculum we've had adopted since two thousand and nineteen. We haven't made any changes now. We were to and Allison will go through the whole process with you tonight. If we were to select a brand new curriculum, um, then yes, the board would have to approve and adopt that. You're correct.
But how do we make changes in curriculum if that is the case?
I, I think that would involve a whole committee. We'd have a vote. We'd have to look at standards potentially changing. Um, so.
Yeah, I realize that, but I do know that in our policies and my college right now that we are supposed to, and that's why I'm one asking why we have never had an input.
Because we have not adopted a new curriculum in the last three years. Our social studies science curriculum was the last adoption. And that was the year before you guys came on. So from going forward, any new curriculum that we bring on, the board will be involved in that process and will have the final to say that, great. Yep.
So you're saying it could only be once it's adopted once and reviewed by that board, it can't be returned in the future?
It could.
It would have to be a new adoption.
It would take a new adoption process.
Right, but there's already, it's sort of, it's already been approved later on.
I, I'm that's very rare. I'd have to see how we would do that. But yeah, I've never.
We can talk about.
Yeah, I think those are all really good questions.
Community analysis here.
Yeah.
Yeah. You're going to get a lot of detail on that in the report and.
Like I already, that is our, our math curriculum. Dreambox is a, you mentioned, part of our math curriculum that we use. Um, but yeah, if the board you wanted to take a deep dive into one of the curriculums and we felt the need to go another direction. It's really costly, but the process, it's, it's a very, it's a lengthy process. That's usually about two years. You want to get it right. Cause you're investing, it could be one point two billion dollars in a curriculum. Um, so, uh, we do that. We take that very seriously.
Okay, and then on the trick question, can you tell me what the actual number is for the band?
So I saw that, I, that was sixty.
Sixty-five is underneath and then there's a ten, but the ten looks like it's on top. But I can't, I couldn't tell.
It's sixty-five. It's sixty-five and six adults. They are going to, it's an annual competition that they go to at Sullivan. So that's what they're going to.
And who's paying for the accommodation?
I believe ASB and then they finance for as well. Yep.
Okay. I, can I address that ASB?
Please, here, all the mystery.
Just dawned on me and I think Casey was trying to address it. It was a negative expense. And I was thinking that it was just like something that's negative, but it didn't go in half. So what happened is we had a check that was canceled that was never owed from a prior year. So it looks like a negative. It's like a refund of expenditure. So that's why I went up.
Okay.
Gave us our money back.
Thank you for asking those questions.
Yes.
I have a question on contracts and agreement. The Discovery Dreambox thing?
Yep.
I just had a question in regards to something like the verbiage. I'm not sure. I have a few questions about it. Where for Discovery Education, for example, I don't know what paragraph. Not that one. It's another.
First of all, you show.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry about that. The Gates Foundation, okay.
Um, like the purpose of that program is to motivate and engage priority students. And I'm just wondering, what does that mean? And is it excluding non-priority students?
No, no, it is not. I'm going to have Allison talk about that. This is her.
Yeah, Dreambox is a intervention and program that's K five that we use with math. And our students really enjoy it. Um, it helps kind of like areas that they really need to work on, like a personalized pathway when they're missing certain skills. In order to do that, um, the program has motivational things to kind of keep kids on track and some kids respond really well to it. Some kids don't. So what they want to do is come here and actually speak with our students and our teachers about what motivates them. Um, our instructional coach has been working with the elementaries and she asked some teachers who use the program, um, quite consistently, um, to participate and they have agreed to participate if we get the M O U approved. And so they'll be going in and asking students questions about what's motivating, what do you like, what do you don't like? So they're really coming in to listen. Um, the, the grant that is funded through the Gates Foundation for Dreambox, um, they have allowed us to, um, because we're, um, talking with students that are in the third through fifth grade. They're actually letting all of our third through fifth graders have Dreambox for free next year, which is reducing our costs by half. So usually it's about thirty-two thousand a year. The quote that's there is for just less than sixteen thousand for our K two and they're giving us three five for free. So we're saving about sixteen thousand dollars by participating in this listening session. Um, and being able to offer really good feedback. Uh, one of the reasons that I'm sure they're choosing our district is because they're trying to study, uh, uh, the effect, uh, of different demographics as well. And so when you see the language about priority students, they might probably reach out to Quincy because we have demographics in the area that they really wanted to study for motivation. But we're not excluding any school or students or anything like that. Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you for that. Um, in the next paragraph, I just have another question. It says that the research team will engage in equity-centered R and D practices with practitioners. Do you mind talking a little bit more about what are those R and D practices and what does that look like?
Yeah, so you know, when they're engaged in research and development, really what that's looking like is they're trying to improve their product. So they're trying to develop products that are more motivated for kids. So their research is to talk to the students, talk to the teachers. What do you like? What's motivating? And then the development is actually trying to make the product better so that it meets the needs of the students.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
And the next question might be for Kia related to the incentive to teachers. Like how does that work? Is it set to like, so check or?
Yeah, we talked about, there's a, there's a very small like that they pass through and we just pass through through exactly the amount that they'd be paying, but we take out the, the benefits, of course, that would have to be legally part of what we pay. So it's just a pass through. We currently do that for college and high school for through Eastern.
But it's funded by them.
Correct.
Right.
They have paid and I wait till I give the check and then I pack them.
It's really good opportunity for the district, especially for the private fellow. To get that, those creative bands for free.
Yeah, it is a research study.
Correct.
Using our, you do either program, but it, it sounds like a fair.
Yeah.
An exchange.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any further questions on the consent agenda? We've wrapped. Any questions from you guys? Okay. There's no further questions. We've already done. Vote to approve.
I approve.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right, and now we're on to reports. The high school drill team, special recognition.
Mr. Pantry, will you tee him up?
Yeah. Uh, thank you, uh, for having us. Uh, our dance, I'm going to introduce our dance coach and then, uh, the dance coach will introduce our, our small but mighty dance team. This is Tina Hobson. She's, uh, been with us for two years now as our, our dance coach and, uh, this year, well, I'll let Tina explain the achievements that the team, uh, experiences here.
Do I get a stand up to the podium? Okay, well, I'm going to stand up while I stand up too. Um, and so our dance team, we had our, we have a larger pep team which has uh, less commitments. So the competition team is a two season sport. Um, and then we really are working on really strong dance technique. And so when we have tryouts, um, all of our girls have an opportunity to try out for football pep, basketball pep, uh, competition team or all three. And so these were my three dancers that tried out for competition. Um, and so I have Celeste Swagger. You're going to stand up. And Summer Hobson. And Riley Trent. And then, um, they were also my captains for the year. So we've been really diving into what it means to be in leadership. And that does not always mean that we are the best at what we do. It's more of making sure that we are doing what is best for our team and, and being who we need for our teammates. And so, uh, these three ladies, I've been very, very proud of them this year. Um, I don't know if any of you guys have ever seen a dance team competition or state or anything, and it is not done with three kids or three dancers. Um, there's definitely some smaller teams. You'll see four, you'll see five, maybe under ten sometimes, but there's fifteen, twenty easily. Um, and these girls went to, we had three regional competitions that we went to. Um, and so this is put on by the Washington State Dance and Drill Coaches Association. The, um, they kind of put on their own regional competitions. So we get to pick and choose where we want to go. So this year we went to Kamaiken High School and, um, Kennewake and Ridge High School in Richland. And then we went to Eastlake, which is over Savannah. Yeah. Um, and when we go to these competitions, we compete in our, our genre. So we compete in the dance genre, which is going to be your lyrical contemporary jazz. They also have things like military kick, hip hop, um, a bigger show and then palm. And so we chose just to kind of work the, the dance category because of having smaller teammates and you can kind of just work that a little bit better for your advantage, having smaller team than trying to do a Palmer team with three is a little bit harder to get those visuals. And so, um, you compete in your genre, but then you compete against every other one A, two A, three A, four A school. It's not going to add it up until you get to state. And even when you get to state, um, so like this year for us, we competed with, there wasn't any other really one A schools in our, in our division or in our genre. Um, we were the only one A in the dance last year. And then Royal City is the only other one A school that really does too much. Occasionally you see a school that pops up, but, um, not really at the state level. So usually, so this year we competed with two A and three A schools. Um, and at state, they ended up taking fifth in the dance category. We, um, yeah, and then between the second place score and then where we were at fifth was less than ten points. And we have three judges that are scoring you on, there is a total of twenty different elements. This is the difference in these scores being an eight point two kind of across the board versus like an eight point seven. And so we're really was, was tight little, you never know where it's going to end up at. Um, in our regional competitions, I can't even think of what we did. I think we did second. Did we do third place for two of them?
Third at Richland, second at Kamaiken and then like seventh or something.
Yeah, the Eastlake one was hard. We were up against like Moses Lake and, and so many big, these big four A schools at the Eastlake one, but it was really. It was, yeah, it was really awesome though, because they held their own and kind of were kind of in the middle ground with all these four A, the only, that competition, the only teams that beat us were four A schools. So, um, yeah, I was super proud of them. They really went out on a limb this year, did something new. Our dance that we did was very, um, kind of, it was a samba. So kind of your Brazilian samba feel. Um, and they went for it. Like these three, I can have them work their tails off and we do a lot of strength training. We did a lot of, um, drills trying to make our turns better and they don't complain. They just do it. And it was, it was a lot of fun working with them. So and I'm excited having these three moving forward into next year. I have five girls on our competition team next year. Um, we actually just had tryouts on Friday. And so, and hopefully I think we'll have two different routines next year. So I'm excited to kind of have my leaders in place and then moving forward with these, these new dancers that we're going to get in and see what we can do next year. So any questions? So you've kind of rambled there for a while.
Oh, that's perfect.
Well, I'm very proud of you.
Thank you. Thank you.
If you guys won this game, that's totally.
They have, uh, they're currently missing dance classes at the moment.
No, no.
No. Head on back. Side over getting ready for it. There's a nice stop. So. Training around.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is Youngren, the visual and performing arts. Thanks, Trenta Trippi, the Agri. I hope you have your presentation.
You wouldn't be the first. Hello, everyone. My name is Kylie Youngren. Um, I am choir director at the high school as well as the visual and performing arts facilitator for our TK twelve team, which if you did not know what VAPA stood for, now you know. And performing arts. Uh, yes. Okay. So what that encompasses, uh, this is a comprehensive program TK through twelve at the elementary level. That looks like our STEAM classes to the arts enrichment, general music classes, which now include adaptive music for our life skills students. And then the Jack Rabbit Elementary Choir. At the middle school level, we have general art, drawing and painting, sculpture, choir, band and general music. Actually, every sixth grader is involved in a music class, either choir band or general music. And then at the high school level, obviously our, our offerings expand a little bit more. Art one into mixed media ceramics, one into drama, one into band percussion ensemble, three different choirs, guitar, piano, and we actually had our pilot year for college and high school music appreciation class where I got to put on my college professor hat and, um, learn, learn that part of it along with the students. But it was a success and I look forward to hopefully having more of that in the future. And so all of these offerings, um, happen through our eleven certified staff members. So eleven people on our team of visual and performing arts folks. Um, I think sometimes people are surprised when they hear about standards in the arts, but we too have curricular standards and we have many of them. And they are shared across all disciplines that fall under four main categories. That's creating, uh, performing, presenting, depending on if you're more in the music world, performing arts world or visual arts, it would be presenting, uh, responding and connecting. The part that you see a lot of the times is the performing and presenting part. If you were at District Arts Night last night, which I know I saw you there. Thank you so much for coming out. Um, that's really what was highlighted, but I want to point out that that performing, presenting part cannot happen without the other standards, without the creativity, without the rehearsal process, without the responding and evaluating process. Um, and then, uh, if, if the arts aren't for connecting across disciplines, across ourselves as people, across cultures, like I don't really know what they're for. So, um, all of that goes into this like teeny tiny bite sized piece that you see of the performance. Um, so students served by VAPA programs, these are, uh, at the middle of high school, like they're, they're fuzzy numbers, but they're take them for what they are. Yes. Elementary, a hundred percent of students get, uh, music and art through the STEAM classes and general music. At the middle school, from my figurines, talking to teachers like, how many did you have first semester, second semester? I think it's around seventy-three percent and then the same, um, at the high school. That also includes through our extracurricular programs like our theater. So the drama classes are a little bit smaller. The extracurricular theater serves about sixty to seventy kids. So, um, through some form of performing arts. And then something else that is neat is that, uh, we have some Q I A students who actually come over to the middle school and high school so that they can get a music class or an art class. Is that something that's not offered at Q I A, but something that they'd still like to continue with? This is actually from District Arts Night a year ago where we, um, presented Dr. Nick Bergen with our friend of the arts award. Uh, last night we got to honor Eric Nelson, who is a school district employee. He taught, uh, music and P E at George for quite a few years and now he's just in P E, but still a wonderful friend of the arts and has been really supportive to our team. Um, we have a lot of events throughout the year. This is like the public facing part of our program. Uh, District Arts Night was last night, another success. I think it was our sixth one that we've had. Um, and, uh, yeah, if you were there, you saw the great showing of both artwork, performances, everything. Uh, there's almost twenty concerts district wide throughout the school year and those happen at the various schools, quite a few at our high school performing arts center. We have two full scale theater productions and many, uh, regional and performance events that students attend, festivals, art shows, that sort of thing. Uh, our band is a parade band with wonderful new uniforms. Thank you to the, or for the support from our district for making those happen. Uh, they have apple blossoms coming up the next two weekends, which I'll talk about in a bit. Uh, and then the choir has done some performance tours and I believe you approved the consent agenda, which means we're now officially doing San Francisco next year. So thank you. And although I got a big checklist of work to do. Um, we tried to do quite a few college visits as well to get students excited because I, I think sometimes kids don't realize that like you don't need to major in music. You don't need to major in art in order to get financial aid for those programs. But there are scholarships available through those programs if you plan to minor, as long as you plan to continue taking lessons or being an ensemble. So we try to, um, pave that way for students, uh, and those opportunities. And then our singing concert coming up. A lot of things. You have a calendar. If you have questions about any of these, please let me. Um, I wanted to just take a moment to highlight some of the programs, uh, so that you can hear a little bit about what's going on. So secondary art, perhaps you'd heard, but Kaian Scott, who he's this guy right here. Um, he, uh, entered the regional art show that happens in Wenatchee and he received two awards. One was Best of Show for, and I'm going to say this incorrectly, Comp Soak Mathis Under the Bed, which if you've seen the drawing, it's like this like cute little like hearts sheet print and then this like creeping thing reaching out underneath. It's very scary, but very cool. And it won first place. As you can see, uh, his style in this one, this is the doomsday, uh, that received first as well. And, uh, he received a two thousand dollar scholarship from Central for these. And I think that's like, if he intends to pursue art there, then he is already eligible for that scholarship and he's just a junior. So that's pretty neat. Um, the art team, Kathy Marchbank at high school and Leslie Pew at the middle school, as well as Pauline Bachman, who's the head of our, um, enrichment folks at the elementary. They've been working with Camille and Allison, uh, to align art standards and hopefully purchase an art curriculum. So that is something that I'm sure the board would work with them on to adopt.
They would.
Yes. Great. Okay. And then the elementary music, something that they wanted to highlight. Uh, I think it's been three years now that they've been doing an annual trip to Yakima Symphony, uh, to participate in, uh, a day of the symphony. I taught in Kitata the year before I came here and I had taken my kids and they used to have, um, it's lemony snippets, instruments of the orchestra. And so it's like a narrative book that they got to learn, like paired with orchestra. It was just really, really neat. Kids loved it and our team has been doing that the last three years. So that's Carol Cook from Monument Elementary and her students. And then for our kids to get to explore the world outside of Quincy, like this is quite an experience to be in a symphony hall at the Capitol Theater in Yakima. And also to see professional musicians on stage performing, uh, the craft at its best. They're hoping to start doing that at the Wenatchee in America Performing Arts Center. They have a program there called Every Kid at the Pack. And they'll pay for tickets and even have, um, some funding for busing if districts need that. So they're hoping to do that a little more local and closer to home. Um, the Q M S choir and general music wanted to share that they have also, um, it involved life skills students in their classes, which was not happening, happening, I believe, prior to this year, but now life skills students are also getting access to music at the middle school level. And these are not their risers. These are the nice risers that live in my room at the high school. Uh, the ones that they have are older than I, which I know I'm not super old, but I'm getting there. Uh, so they are fundraising for new risers. They've had some, um, they're, they're ready for new ones. So that's all I'll say about that. And hopefully you'll hear about more fundraising stuff from them too. Um, speaking of fundraising, we had a big fundraising push, uh, last summer. And I think the total project was only about two months long. But thanks to the help of Ty Christensen, Tom Parrish and Deb Adams, uh, they kind of spearheaded the project to get us a new sound system high school. I'm sure you've heard lots about this, so I don't want to belabor it, but the fact that we were able to raise seventy thousand dollars for that was. we were able to raise seventy thousand dollars for that was really incredible. I almost didn't recognize this photo. Ty Christensen uh, offered to do the sound for my last choir concert. And I was like, whose theater is that? Because I'm used to seeing like the green curtains and I was like white and blue. But we have um, as, as the choir director, I'm kind of a sound purist and I was like, we don't need microphones. But it was really nice to have them, even in our wonderful acoustically sound space, you'll see some area mics. And then the subwoofer system is just really, really incredible. So we're very thankful for that and that's really helping elevate our theater programs so that all of our students who work so hard to learn their lines, they can be heard on every single one. Um, it also provides one more wonderful piece of equipment for our students to learn on so that our students really get to have. The tech booth is their engineering lab to learn about the sound and lights and everything else. Uh, theater program continues to grow. Uh, Haley Weber is very excited about the fact that many are about, I think, probably like ninety percent of the students this year are underclassmen. Like we have very few seniors. And so that's always exciting to look at the year ahead about the growth and hopeful retention uh, moving into the next year. Um, for our high school music, uh, our band is bursting at the seams, right? You can hardly find a seat in that room. It's so exciting. And looking ahead at numbers for next year, a hundred and two students signed up for our high school band in Quincy. And I remember when we made the uniform purchase, I think we purchased about a hundred uniforms and I was like, wow, I'm like, we'll, we'll have some extras. No, we won't. And that was only like a year and a half ago. Like that is crazy. So Ms. Chandler's doing an excellent, wonderful job. And the students are also being wonderful student leaders and pulling kids along into the program. Um, so yeah, there's a lot of kids signed up for band. We're running out of room. Uh, and we have Apple Blossom for the high school grand apple blossom parade coming up, not this weekend, but the following weekend. And then our middle schoolers will bring us into parade season this weekend at Junior Apple Blossom. Uh, high school choir, uh, our numbers are also looking the biggest they've ever been for next year, which I'm really excited about. Uh, and then we have our annual fundraiser, sing, which is exactly what it sounds like. They sing, imagine in the choir. Um, but they are actually singing solos and they get to choose the songs. And then we have a student slash Youngren, me and my husband, band alongside them. So it's kind of like more pop rock show and kind of student driven in that way and the fact that they're choosing the literature and then we, we make them feel like rock stars. Um, especially now that we're going to San Francisco next year, I invite you all to attend a sing, May eighth and May ninth. Two weeks from this Thursday and Friday. It's really neat to see the kind of leadership that students uh, take on. I think any kind of live performance is collaborative problem solving, a lot of nonverbal communication, a lot of like using your skills in order to solve the problem in the moment because you can't, okay, everybody stop, let's try, you need to do this, like we're, we're having to make it work. And so um, I think this is where a lot of kids take big steps as musicians, especially if they're members of our band. So pretty cool. Um, so I wanted to end with our mission statement because um, I don't want us to think of the arts as extra, but the arts are essential. And this is something that kids take with them their whole life, regardless of where they end up, what they end up doing. Um, we hear them called soft skills and once again, they're, they are essential skills, like the problem solving that can happen, the collaboration that can happen, these things that they learn through these com- communal activities, which um, there's a lot of things, like when we're trying to embed SEL into core content curriculum. And I'm sitting there in these meetings and I'm like, oh, like that is just so natural in music and that's so natural in art and it's so natural in theater. And like the way we learn through play is just really incredible and why I love what I do. And so when we're talking about a culture of belonging, the community that our students feel in our programs is evident by the fact that they keep choosing to come back. When we're looking at excellence, um, I didn't, I didn't read off our awards today, but I, oh, and I forgot to mention, we have our, uh, I think it's our first group ever from our uh, instrumental ensemble band at high school going to state. We haven't had students do that before and so that's so exciting. And um, as Tina was mentioning, for the arts competitions, for some reason, they put us right in the ring with the four A schools, which is fine, I guess. Uh, but like we compete against Wenatchee, we compete against Eastmont. And uh, at least in music, like it's only the first place winners who get to go. And so the fact that you make it to state like that is a big deal. And for our kids to show up along those kids from Wenatchee or from Eastmont who all take lessons and like still get to do it, it's pretty incredible. And so um, we hope that when kids get to experience that, that proves to them they, they can do that in other areas of their life as well. They can continue chasing success because they know what that feels like and they're empowered to live that out in their other experiences. And then engaged and productive citizens. Um, hopefully you haven't just seen us at school events, hopefully you've seen us out in the community. Hopefully you've seen kids participating and serving their community through the arts. And we hope that that's something that stays with them after our program. So um, we believe that the arts is helping fulfill our mission statement here at the Quincy School District and we're so thankful as a team that we have the support of district leaders, district staff in order to keep doing the work we're doing and best serve kids. So thank you. And if you have questions, let me know.
Just kind of quickly, what, what all encompasses the trip to San Francisco?
Yeah, so um, this will be our second time working with Educational Discovery Tours. And we'll do a college visit where their college choir director will do a clinic with our group, so we'll sing some songs for them and they'll work with uh, them, give them feedback, give me some things to chew on, give them some things to chew on. Uh, from the draft itinerary, we'll get to attend a musical together, but like a Broadway touring group, which quite a few of our students haven't gotten to see, aren't done at that caliber, so that's pretty cool. Um, we'll, there's quite a bit of sightseeing involved in this one. Um, we'll attend a day, I keep calling it Great Value Disneyland, but it's some, it's some theme park, that's obvious. I don't know what it is, but we're attending that and they'll get to perform at the park. So, and that's what the Disneyland tour was, we performed at the park and then we also got to do uh, uh, what is it, the Imagineers, but like the Disney Imagination Campus, we got to work with them and like sing on a soundtrack. So there's like the educational aspect and then there's also the like fun with your friends part. So yeah, a little bit of both, work and play.
Other questions?
Hey, thank you guys so much. We appreciate it.
Uh, curriculum update?
Great. Ah, all right. Well, thank you for having me back this evening. Allison Gately, Director of Teaching and Learning. I'm really excited to talk about curriculum with this board. Uh, we have not yet been through a curriculum adoption process with this board. Um, so uh, I'm just really excited to preview and give you an overview of um, what to expect, what, um, go ahead and go to the next slide. We're going to talk about what a guaranteed and viable curriculum is. That's really important as we're thinking about curriculum in our district. Uh, we're going to talk about instructional materials selection process. So what does it look like to really select um, instructional materials? And then what's your part as the school board in that process and our policy? And then I'll talk about the status of all of our core instructional materials. Um, and then some considerations as we're thinking about updating those materials and some current work um, that we have been considering and, and, and working on as we are anticipating some future uh, curriculum updates. So guaranteed and viable curriculum, um, Robert Marsano is one of the main experts in education and he has cited a guaranteed and viable curriculum as the single most important thing that a school or district can do to raise student achievement. And the reason that is, is because really a guaranteed and viable curriculum represents the core of what we say is important for student learning and what we say is nonnegotiable for our teachers and our students. Uh, and there's, there are a lot that goes into that. We'll talk about the next slide. So the words guaranteed and viable, guaranteed means that all students have access to that same essential learning. So we call them priority standards, no matter which school or which teacher that they go to. Viable means that there's enough time in the school year uh, for our teachers to teach those priority skills and content and for our students to actually learn uh, those essentials. So the two most important things when we're thinking about guaranteed and viable is consistency so that every student, it doesn't matter what teacher that they have, what school they go to, they're learning the same priorities um, that we've identified as a district. And in order to do that, we have to be very, very focused on what's most important and prioritize that over, over the time available. And that requires that um, we not only identify the priority standards, but we have common pacing, common assessments, common expectations about what that looks like. So when we think about instructional materials, um, the process that we are going through um, is we start with what are the parameters and goals of the district? So the parameters are important because um, as we are considering budgeting and resources, um, current uh, goals and how we're meeting them, we can decide which of the core instructional materials we really need to look at and the timeframe for that. Um, and really how many resources we have to be able to update those instructional materials. And then we look at our existing course materials and, and the design of those. And so it's very possible that we say, hey, the goals um, are this. But then when we look at the materials, we can decide, hey, the current materials actually can get us there if we make some adjustments. So we don't necessarily have to adopt or purchase new instruction materials as part of this process. We could decide based on our goals, we could use the same existing materials or, or, you know, adapt what we already have. So it's really important, we're carefully analyzing what we currently have. And then if we decide that we need new materials or we want to look at other material options, then we bring a review and selection committee together to really look at what materials are available, look at them in great detail based on what our goals are. And then um, from there, once that committee has decided uh, what they like, we'll talk about your role in that after it's adopted, then we actually implement. We have um, it, it's quite a long implementation process because first we have to provide professional learning and then um, actually provide the curriculum. Um, and then we decide along the way, what are those assessments that we're going to do and study and prioritize? Um, and then um, depending on how long our uh, implementation is, we either have a kind of a set time where we're going to look at that again. Or if we decide, hey, this isn't working for us, we can decide we need to look at those materials. So I'm going to go um, on the next slide, I'll show you kind of where we are. Okay, first, so identifying the goals, existing course design and then review and selection. There's a re- review and selection committee that meets and that curriculum study team reviews and then does a recommendation. Um, that recommendation then goes to what we call the Instructional Materials Committee. And that is a broad stakeholder group that wasn't necessarily on the Curriculum Adopt Review Team. They are um, cross K twelve, parents, administrators. Um, they look at um, the recommendation from the Curriculum Study Team to see if their process made sense and that they agree that that um, or that it was a good process. And then if they agree, the Instructional Materials Committee makes a recommendation to the school board that yes, we think this was a valid process. And then the school board then decides if you want to adopt that curriculum. The full policy and procedure are, are linked in there as well. So this is the status of where we are with our core instructional materials. So when we're thinking ELA, math, science, social studies, um, this is where we are. Um, I joined uh, in my role in the nineteen twenty school year and at that time, uh, we were in year two of a seven year um, implementation of a math curriculum. And so before I came, there was a K twelve math adoption of uh, Bridges at K five, I Ready or Ready Math at Middle School and Envisions AG eight, the high school. And the reason it says two of seven is when they adopted and when the board approved at that time, they approved a seven year bundle of the instructional materials. And we'll talk about what different options are for instructional materials are in a minute. But um, you prepay for a certain amount of materials depending on, you know, what your parameters are, of course. Um, and once though that seven year period is up, then you'd have to pay year by year to continue with that same curriculum. So the reason you saw some math curriculum up on the school board um, for re-upping the contract is we're now on a year to year with some of our programs. So um, for example, Ready Math, we are currently in year seven of their digital programs. Uh, we had purchased up through seven years, now we have to purchase one year at a time. And every time you purchase one year at a time, they um, you know, the cost is more expensive than if you have a long year, it looks multi-year commitment, right?
The hard thing about that math adoption is we adopted, but then COVID hit. So we didn't even get a real honest look at the curriculum to really analyze is effective, is it not effective really till the twenty one, twenty two school year, um, when we get math, those two.
So um, this year is the twenty four, twenty five. We're working right now to establish some parameters around what kind of resources do we have available to be able to um, fund next year, bringing a team together to really look at our existing courses and decide, do we need different materials or do we need to look for more materials different, uh, or can we adapt our current material? If we decide that we need to look at other materials, then we would bring in uh, different material vendors and look at those materials, analyze them. And then uh, that committee would go through a pretty extensive process, which we have lots of detail on, I could, I could share with you at a, at a later time and I will be sharing with you as we go through this process next year in quite detail. Um, and then again, they make a recommendation and then it goes to the Instructional Materials Committee and then it would go to you.
And how long is their process?
The process is quite lengthy to go through. It's usually about a year and a half, sometimes two years to go through the process. So if we're identifying goals and parameters right now, the full year next year will be to go through that process of the, the, the team, um, and I'm seeing and you. And then um, if the school board decides to approve in the spring typically, then we would implement the following year. So it would be this twenty six, twenty seven, year one implementation for math.
Discovery Math also there?
So um, Bridges is the core math program. Um, that's the guaranteed and viable curriculum. So we say that, you know, every unit, we know exactly what the priority standards are, they're the same across every school, right? The Dream Box, which is now part of Discovery Ed. Um, Dream Box is a supplemental program that works alongside Bridges that helps for intervention. So it's student um, paced based on where the student scores. And you know, let's say we're working on a particular standard Bridges. Dream Box will assess those particular standards in Bridges and if they're lacking skills, then it'll give them lessons that'll support those skills. And also it has really detailed reports for teachers where they know a group of students, you know, really needs intervention, they can pull a small group and then work with those students with some additional Bridges intervention materials that's more hand bind and one-on-one or in a small group. The Dream Box is a online program. Yeah. Yeah. Similarly, I Ready and Ready Math, Ready Math is actually, the name Ready Math is actually the core curriculum. I Ready is actually the digital component that goes with Ready Math. Um, most programs now have digital components, either for the teacher or, and al- always for the teacher and mostly for students now. Um, and so when we look at materials, we need to look at costs for multi-year digital licenses and other materials. So that's math. Um, ELA, uh, the, when I joined in nineteen twenty, the six twelve ELA um, department had already kind of started identifying the need and uh, COVID hit that year. But since we really knew we had a need, we were able to push through, it was kind of part of a lot of um, online meetings. Uh, but we did have a year one implementation in the twenty twenty one school year. We are already, hard to believe, in year five of six of that implementation. So at the end of the following school year, next year, we'll be starting to look at the parameters. Us K five, we started the process um, in twenty twenty one and we are now in year three of implementation. K twelve science and social studies, we are now in year two. And K twelve science, we are now in year two. But you'll notice that this two of five, we did a five year adoption here and a six year adoption here um, because of the identified parameters and goals that we started out with.
Very special. Oops, sorry.
No, that's great. We're good. No, that's great. We're good. And unless you have any questions.
I have a question for the for the non-core.
Yes, yes.
Is that done at different levels? I know like advisory committees approve the CTE curriculum, but it goes arts, physical education.
Yes, that's a great question. So I debated about putting it in here and now I kind of wish I did. I have a whole nother slide that is actually all of the cur- program um adoptions that I've done since I've been here. So we've done PE, music, we're working on art right now. We did K twelve's uh computer science. Those aren't core instructional materials that we think of. Um but we do still have a team that goes through an extensive process to look at those materials. And anytime we have a purchase, we would of course, I mean, that's over, you know, that five thousand and that multiple year contract, of course, that comes to the board for you guys to look at. Actually, I do want to make one other comment. Um and I can come back and do more detailed report on that if you're interested. But um the little note at the bottom, um we have a conference on sexual health education materials that were adopted well before I was in this role. It was at least ten years ago, I think. Um when the state updated the law and requirements, we had to make just a couple of tweaks at middle and high school, but it was there very minor. Um but as the state is getting uh, they're studying more programs to see if they uh uh the requirements of the law, our six-eight program has been studied and it doesn't fully meet the requirements of the new standards. So our high school program currently meets, but our six-eight, we're gonna need to look at next year and you'll definitely be part of that process next year as we look at updating that. Okay. So some other considerations, um you know, it comes back to guaranteed and viable. You have to be really tight on what you're prioritizing around your standards when you're looking at curriculum. And uh Washington State is undergoing a pretty massive update of the state standards, which could impact how we prioritize our standards. Um this is a much, much bigger document that you could uh look at if you like. Um but just so you know, ELA and math standards, uh the plan currently, they should be released at any time. We're hoping to see them. Um or past the date that that they said that they'd be released for review. But they're saying in this most recent timeline that we will need to implement at the beginning of next year year, the new math and ELA standards. We've had a draft that we've had teams looking at um to anticipate this. Um but we won't really know the final until it's finalized. Um so that's happening next year. I'm really hopeful that we will have the new standards in hand before we start any part of the math adoption. Um and then science and social studies, they're a year behind. Um I don't yet anticipate it's gonna have any major impact on our current adoptions. But um that would be one of those reasons that we may be triggered to say, hey, we have this current program, but maybe we need to take a look and make sure it still matches if there's an update to standards. Um because you get great cost benefits when you adopt for a certain amount of timeframe for a particular instructional material. Um if we wanted to, you know, it's somewhere in the middle of the process. Let's say we were in year five of seven of a math curriculum, you know, instructional materials. And we wanted to look at materials in year five, we could absolutely do that. But if we decided on different materials, we'd just be losing the cost benefit of uh of, you know, that long-term planning. So I hope that answers your question from earlier. We certainly can look at a at a curriculum at any time. Um but there are considerations. There's textbooks. So depending on the program, most of them have something like a physical textbook and once you buy it, you have it. Um there are paperwork books that tend to be consumable, so you have to buy a new one every year. Um there are digital platform licenses for teacher access, student access, depending on the program.
One one consideration that isn't up there, but we're definitely thinking about and seeing where it fits in with almost all of our curriculum is AI.
Yes.
Um and it's evolving so vastly or so so quickly.
Yeah.
We really haven't landed in on a on a spot where we could say we could leave it into a curriculum adoption cycle. Um but I think that could rapidly change or influence curriculum adoption as well.
And actually, it does live within Dream Box as we speak of that. It has adaptive learning uh through AI as well to our target learners where they're at.
Hmm. Yeah.
Were you on this, the state stand for view to be forecast any cost implications of their curriculum changes?
Yeah, it it is. It has huge implications when the state updates standards because then we have to go back and look at, you know, do are these do the priority standards still live within the new standards? Um and if not, at at any time, I mean, even if there there's close alignment and with the math, there's really close alignment. They just add it. Looks like they're adding a few elements in math. Um but even with those little changes, we still need to bring a group together and really look at and analyze and understand which costs, resources, time and money to do that. So we we aren't uh, we don't get any extra money from the state when that happens.
I'm just curious if they forecasted like these changes, we project will cost each of strength, yeah, based on student load.
Yeah, it's really dependent on the instructional materials that you select.
It's so important right now.
Yes, instructional material, I mean, you can have some instructional materials that are basically free. They're open source. They're available to anyone and that's a very low cost.
Yeah.
But there are some materials with AI embedded or, you know, it's a lot, they they can be very expensive. So that's why that parameters time, you know, is really important to see, you know, how much are we willing to really invest in this? And then we would look at programs that are instructional materials that would meet those terms. Yeah. So just to highlight a few things that uh we have been anticipating the updates to the new standards for math and ELA. We knew this was coming. Um so this year in math, uh we have been doing professional learning from um elementary up to high school. And we've been taking teams um from second grade all the way up to high school and really studying with them. What is a really good lesson look like with our current materials? And are we getting the amount of student engagement? And are the kids actually learning something from that lesson with those materials? And so we've been doing a deep dive in that this year and I've learned so much about how our teachers are using our materials. Um it'll really help us as we're going into the math adoption. Um this spring, assuming that they're released, the new standards are released from the state, we will be looking at those new standards really closely um to determine if we need to make a really big, you know, move next year. Um and then, of course, identifying uh timelines and things for the math process next year. For ELA, uh we, there is a shift um in the standards, which we're happy to see around um struck, what they call structured literacy and the science of reading. And what this really articulates is that when we're teaching reading, it's important to teach comprehension and and reading and speaking and listening and writing alongside, you know, really intentional decoding skills that are really sequenced or, you know, teachers or students are learning how to read in a really intentional sequence. So this year, um we've been working on K twelve uh professional learning around what this structured literacy looks like. And we've made huge gains in supporting students with reading instruction and intervention K twelve. Uh and then um we will do the same with the ELA standards once um they're released to refresh our priority standards. And throughout this year, and actually we started last spring when they were first, the first draft was released, we started looking at kind of the direction that the new ELA standards might be going in. And we've already started uh thinking about that and making some adjustments. So we feel like as long as the standards, once they're adopted, aren't um radically different, that the draft will be well-prepared for that. And that is the introduction to where we are in overview. So any questions specifically as we engage in any curriculum adoption process? I will be here e- each step of the way to give you updates regularly on how we're I I like to start by engaging the community and our students and our stakeholders and what we really want to prioritize, even at the very beginning of the process for identifying what our needs are for curriculum. So just know that um this is only the first time, you're not gonna only hear from me when we go to adoption. It's a a regular update process.
And I want, you know, just commend Allison too, just the work that she's done. She's really um taken our adoption process to, you know, really in-depth levels. For example, when we did our social studies and science adoption, I think she did this with math too. Uh we started with students and families. Our our staff, their opinion obviously matters a great deal because they're the one who's teaching it. And the and our staff can be really quick to say, this is exactly what we want, what we need. But it's also really important to hear from our families and students, what do they want and what do they need out of a curriculum? What are their expectations? So before we even go to our staff, Allison and uh uh does focus groups with our students and our families to really hear from them and really shape those values and vision for our math curriculum or our social studies curriculum. And then that really influences the committee on how they might score a curriculum.
And so you you're the one who like is organizing all the curriculums.
Yeah.
Every program.
So CTE is a little is different. So the process that CTE goes through and the framework um process that is act, it does live fairly independently, actually. That's the only one um that I don't directly oversee uh all the other.
But it does come to the board though? So the process is kind of.
The purchase does.
The per- the purchase of the materials, if it's over that five thousand dollar.
Not the adoption.
So the. The core cur- yeah, CTE is a little bit separate and it goes through a a really rigorous process that's a little bit different. There's advisory boards with the community and they have.
Your curriculum also have like a community advisory board. So it sounds the same except that for core programs, it has board authorization for CTE, it bypasses and it's just the purchase. Is is that fair?
Yeah, if we look in detail on the board policy and procedure, it actually outlines exactly which need to go through the process of um of a committee and instructional materials committee and then the full board, the board policy adoption. And you'll hear, you'll see language on core instructional materials and you'll see language on supplemental. And there's some definitions there. And so CTE would be supplemental. Or um, yeah, I have to look at the exact language on it, but it's not part of the the core process that requires the adoption.
And one thing with CTE is a little bit more minimal when you're writing the frameworks is they're writing them to industry standards. So their advisory groups, they are industry professionals saying, this is what we need. This is what we are seeing in the field right now. Uh this is what, you know, we'd like your students to learn. So they they're getting that rigorous relevant learning that's tied to the industry partners in CTE. And that's part of that requirement for CTE. But you know, if we did an adoption, you know, that's over five thousand dollars, that was, you know, a major CT curriculum that we're gonna be locked into for five years. Or it's not really the case in most of our CD programs. It would absolutely come to the board and the first time you hear about it would be at uh uh, you know, my weekly update. But by the way, we're gonna drop the nine hundred thousand on like on a, you know, combine.
I guess my question. My question, have you guys rooted in a one graph of like the phases and then it be right off to like the process of committee that goes to board authorization?
Yeah.
Um like, what does that process look like? We, I've never experienced it. So is it like a pitch? Or is the decision kind of made and we're just rubber stamping it? I'm just trying to see like how involved truly are we to get a good general idea of like, does an advisory committee give a like the pros, concerns, potential liabilities? Like, is it a report?
Yes, and there it's it's um so there's a, there's very specific parameters that are written into policy, uh the procedure um that I linked around what needs to be presented to the instructional materials committee. Um and then that information would be then shared with the board on what they found through the instructional materials committee. However, you're not gonna be surprised, especially if it's a big core, often like math. Because when we put together the uh the curriculum study team that comes together, it's usually at least a six-month process. It's like three to six-month process and we identify the key stakeholders. There's always parent invitation. There's usually a stakeholder or a a a we can invite our a board member to join. It's great if you do. We've done that in the past and I really prefer that, love that. But all along the way, I come and give you updates. So you shouldn't ever be surprised of like, oh, what happened? Yeah, yeah. So in fact, yeah. So i- in, this is one way. So when when I I didn't do the math adoption that was here. So but when I think it was the K twelve ELA adoption and I presented my timeline, at that time, the board, you know, really pushed back in a way that I appreciated. They said, how are we getting student and parent feedback on this right away? And I thought, you know, we have mechanisms, especially coming out of the pandemic, to really interview our parents and understand them deeply and our and our and our students through empathy interviews, which we did through the pandemic. So based on that feedback from the board, in all the adoptions since I've started with those empathy interviews, I'm really reaching out to parents. So I really appreciate feedback from the board on, you know, what you're hearing in the community to really streamline and strengthen our process. Because it is very expensive to invest, not only in the materials, but really the time for our teachers to make this a guaranteed and viable program, a curriculum. We spend so much time collaborating on what it looks like to really implement. What does it look like in the ideal for students and um and teachers? That I I want to make sure that we all are in agreement on what our end goal is and um that that community understands what our goals are and that they've had some input in there as well. I've learned a lot from community members who've shared um things about what their experiences are that have really shaped how we want the curriculum to to be in the end result. So um I personally take a great, oh, um bit of responsibility and 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 ask you that you are really involved in the process. I know from this board, from whatever interview so far, that I'm sure that you will be and ask great questions. So I look forward to that. Okay, one more question. Yeah, that's okay.
So health is a CTE program, but you listed it under there.
Oh, okay.
Of sexual reproduction.
So if you think of core programs, think of required, like everybody has to take it. Everybody has to take math, everybody has to take ELA, science, social studies, comprehensive sexual health, everybody has to take it at some point. CTE is an elective. They don't have to take it. Um so if it's core and everybody has to take it, that's usually what needs to go through the board, adoption.
Like PE?
PE, yeah, yeah, yes, correct.
CTE.
Yeah, and health is and comprehensive sexual health is actually teaching, it's not CTE.
But parts of the health class. So the program is like bright in the mist.
Yeah.
It's more geared towards giving kids what they need to go into the medical.
Absolutely.
You're right. So the family consumer health teacher teaches the sexual health curriculum that's required at ninth grade. Um the teacher is funded through CTE because the entire uh year class is a CTE course. But the section that is teaching the sexual health is a curriculum that's core that we are required to teach. So it goes through, that core curriculum goes through that.
That makes it kind of a thing.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, I appreciate you asking because that would be confusing. Yeah, yeah.
I want to add to the implement, the the adoption's the easy part. That's, it sounds complex.
It's complex.
But really, that that implementation is where it gets really hard. And it's a good two-year process to really get a curriculum implemented. So you purchase it, everybody's really excited about it, then you adopt it and everyone hates it.
Guaranteed.
It's it's guaranteed. Because it's a change. It's a really big change. And you know, I've had uh as an elementary principal, teachers in tears saying, you know, they're they're this isn't working, kids aren't learning, it's so hard. But then by the end of the years, they've had the best results that they've ever had because they stick with it. But it really is about a two-year process. So you know, you you, there's this big buildup to the adoption that, you know, Allison will come and do those presentations. But really, she'll come back the next year and even the following year, potentially if it's a big math or science, to update the board on how adoption's going. The implementation, sorry, the implementation of adoption. That's that's where the, that's where the real work happens.
Sorry, one more thought. So SEL programs.
Yeah.
Is that the same as curriculum? I'm thinking like you guys have said like Character Strong, also something.
Yes, so we have instructional materials that meet the SEL standards. Um and they, so if you go to our website. Um, and they, so if you go to our website, um uh there's a section of our academic programs and then there's a section that's called curriculum and it's a page. It'll list all of our instruction materials for K five and then secondary. And you'll see what the SEL, like how we're meeting the SEL standards. In K five, um the SEL standards are actually met through our ELA program into reading, which you adopted. And as we did the adoption process, we talked about the SEL component and how that would meet so we wouldn't have to do an extra supplemental. So yeah, and yeah, feel free to reach out if you have any questions after looking at that. We also have our curriculum library, which is in um the district office that we can look at any of the printed materials that are here. We have a copy of all those. So be great if you or anyone in the community wanted to reach out and I can certainly show you the material.
Any other questions? Right, thanks so much, Allison.
Yeah, thank you.
And Miss Berg, Dr. Berg, it's a great to know you.
So it is spring and there are a lot of dates flying around. So we have a lot of things happening. Um, I did want to bring to the board, there is a roster original meeting taking place in OMAC on the twenty first of May. Um, I was curious if if any, anyone from the board is going to do a 10 that. A long drive up there. No, no, I don't mind if you do a long drive, take that drive. Here, you can attend or no?
Sure, yeah, I'll look at all the.
Just reach out to them and let them. Um, today, uh at the middle school, we had junior achievement. So we have a big uh every eighth grader uh learning about personal finance. So they're going through a personal finance uh presentation through junior achievement, all eighth graders today and tomorrow. So it's really exciting that all uh eighth graders will get that experience. Last week, we welcomed Officer Stump and K nine Sarah at the high school. So it's really exciting to have uh Officer Stump or Second SRO, but it's great having the K nine, the K nine spent one day at the high school and we're making some other arrangements to make it a little bit more comfortable there. Uh we had rearranged in our office, uh just to have a designated spot for the K nine when she isn't working. But um we will be using the K nine uh at our high school as another safety measure and another measure. So we are happy about that. Uh that at night, last night was really, really well attended. Thank you, Casey, for coming. It was great seeing your family there. Uh highlight of the night, they we had elementary, middle and high school, all singing the Quincy fight song, band playing. It was so fun. It's on our social media. So if you have a chance to go see just the spirit and pride that our kiddos have in what they do, um you know, just the three are, you know, Haley, Kylie and Devon, they are just models of of exceptionalism. And when you have exceptional people in these roles, what they can, with with the spaces and the materials, what they can get out of our kids. Um, it's just absolutely amazing. Uh they give me hope for some of our athletic programs. Uh but what they do is just absolutely amazing. It was really cool to see everybody under one roof, um performing together. It was really fun. Last Friday, Victoria Hodge, uh thank you, uh led another session of learning more about dual language. And what a dual language, Spanish, uh English, uh course we look like here in the Quincy School District, potentially. We heard from Grandview, Madawa and Prosser, three districts that have been doing it for a very long time, really good established models. Uh, next year, the next step for our our committee that's looking at dual language will be visiting school districts to see what that could possibly look like in Quincy. The research around dual language, it's just, it's out of this world. It really is, it's a language program for all learners, not just Spanish speakers, but for English speakers as well. Uh, you know, there's research that says even if you go up to fifth grade, the the results of kiddos that were in the dual language program are seeing students who worked even in the high school. So it just really opens up other neural pathways when you're bilingual. Um, tomorrow is Admin Assistance Day. So just want to say thank you to all of our admin assistants and admin professionals. We have amazing front office people here that just do such an amazing job. Very thankful. Thank you, Bella. Um, and then just two things uh for the board to be aware of, well, three dates actually. Uh, this Saturday, the twenty sixth, uh two thirty to five thirty. Uh, we have our family festival at the middle school. It's a really well-attended event. We genuinely have anywhere from four hundred to seven hundred people attend this event. There'll be lunch provided, forwards open to attend, dot I say hi. It's a really nice uh celebration with our families. May second, we have our Booster Club Auction back to Jack's, uh another really fun opportunity to support our kiddos and celebrate um our athletics. Uh that starts at five thirty and silent auction. It usually goes from five thirty to about eight. So that's the second of May. And then May sixth, uh from four thirty to six, we have our Employee of the Year retirees celebration. All boards welcome. It's a really fun um opportunity to just recognize, celebrate uh Bob Cool from, you know, FFA. Uh he's retiring, celebrate him, all his contributions. Uh we have five other retirees. Then we have our uh uh Employees of the Year from our schools department. It's just really inspirational to hear our principals talk about the amazing depth employees that we have and how they contribute every day. So I just really encourage the board to go to that. So that's uh if you can. May sixth, four thirty, uh six at the high school. So that is all I have.
Thanks, sir. Just a little bit. Do you represent in court, please?
Yeah, so we have started SBA testing uh for sophomores and previously again, growing up, uh I'd run into the school district and every SBA was a dread. I'm a heer of this. To get cheesesteak and a minute and a water bottle and coffee called the day. Um, as those years progressed, we bettered a little bit and to get to high school, you get rid of that, which really sad. So it's it's been exciting after the new sophomores came in and I'm really proud of the sophomores and the more that come that are very vocal of their needs and what they want to see, not just for their class, themselves, for their peers. And what they requested was kitty bag. And every classroom started doing it. Uh we bring the kitty bag. They have um a sensory stripped health anxiety during test, bubble gum in, a little school sheet, a toy and a lifesaver. Um, we add some little treat and then snow, good luck, or you got this, or you're capable of all these amazing things. Um and we hand them out to each student. And even the student that later tests, uh make a test, they also get one. And we've seen a lot of good feedback when it comes to those. A lot of students look forward to it. I've got a lot of good comments of you know, this kid looks so bad. I get to feel my lifesaver and my kitty. Not enjoyable experience, but it's become a lot better than it has been. Um so it's certainly that. Which also have, again, as you mentioned, the high school, we met the Quincy High School Band will be marching on the third. We are um a fifth, we are the first fifteen. So there's deep when I achieve. And then it's East Martin Venice. So the first three bands led last year. So go show some support. Um, and prom is May seventeenth. That seems chosen to be a rainy night. And you may be confused, but it's more, it's a Latin music. It's very it's very like high spin it. We have a little pictures board and if you see, you're like, wow. You'll be seeing through that. Also, uh we're planning a lot of senior events coming up. I think the next two months are just filled with so many things. Awards, this senior sunset. Uh, I think it's, I I would, I would like to mention to you guys that we are doing outside of a district or out of a school event. It's kind of a senior class thing. It's called Senior Assassin. And I don't know if maybe you guys heard about it, but.
Name your bite.
Assassin. And you get out from flushing and you get automatically found someone that has been code. So you join in and tell me you have to go and shoot the gun, the water gun. And then someone gets you, right? Um, rules are very clear. It's very safe. We shoot some things out that our class um to make sure they're all safe. Uh I just wanted to mention it because I know some concerned brought up last year and the community, uh so we manage a lot of things. And the moment that anything does go wrong, it will be, the angle will be, will end. Um, so we're trying to make it as best possible and also try to explain to all seniors. Uh, so if you have any questions about that, I would be glad to answer that. I think last year was, it became a little hectic. Um, but I think now the A's be good to control that. Now we're trying to make it a little more manageable and less intense. Um, so there's both any plays and everything hopefully will move this year. Uh we're not quite literally attacking our peers. I wouldn't, I wouldn't feel like that. Um, also, one more thing. Oh, we are also taking for the first times in many years, a senior trip. System plans. Uh, we've gone through a lot of alternatives and questions and the insurance and we can and can't do. So thankfully, we've been able to figure out uh an alternative for that. And we rented out, we're planning to rent out the John Waters life. Uh, we are planning to, I think it's, I I don't have the logistics yet. I still in the process. Um but each child paid fifteen dollars and that would include their meal and their ticket. And that would come out of our senior fund. Uh, but again, we we make up majority of that money hopefully, as well as we can provide for our cap decorations. And we still have senior sunrise um to plan for. And we're still trying to figure out the numbers. Also, also about the plot to that's still in motion. Um, hopefully we'll have, we'll have that happen. And lastly, we're also having the same deal as senior sunrises. We're going to have a four-yard takeover. Where the entire day we spend there, um Mr. Cool, Mr. Ball, so they're making burgers, hot dog. There's very many games and it's seniors all day. It's kind of our senior escape day when it's cool. And we can all just kind of enjoy and that before.
Everybody gets to watch you enjoy.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's, it gets a little awkward. I noticed it like last year when they tried to do it. Um, everyone's just peeking through the window like this and you're trying to enjoy your burger. But again, last year was ran very well for the previous seniors. But again, it's controlled that, kind of managed it very well. Um so yeah, it's gonna be, we have to plug this one up. Maybe if you have any questions, please put your question. I don't want I don't want it out, so.
The name, that's all.
Yeah, yeah. We have something to go with that for for next year, yeah.
For sure.
Thank you so much. Um, Board Leadership Report. So we've been using this time to update what's been going on with the WIA. The latest update, they voted last week. Um, neither of the two amendments, Amendment seven or Amendment eight passed. Uh Amendment seven was the closest to passing that would have uh driven, um you participate in the the gender of your birth. Um, it missed by one vote. It needed sixty percent to pass and it it didn't quite hit that threshold. Um, and there's some mixed reviews on where the WIA might go from here. They were both advisory votes after they were told by the state that they may violate state law. So there's also some, um there's been uh petitions to the Department of Education for uh so right violation, sorry. Yes, complaints in some of the school districts are affected directly by participation. So it's moving through the courts now. Other than that, if we had any updates from Board Leadership.
It was just a board retreat.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, it's gonna be the schedule of the board retreat. Thank you.
No, we need to book it.
And then June, Rita, you out?
I'm gone for two and almost three, look fully.
The first or the second?
June, the last, while I leave, like the eighth and then back about the third.
Okay. So I might be in July.
Pushed to July.
Does anybody have July dates that are available that they know or that they, that won't work? Because the twenty was the only one that I possibly would, and it just doesn't work out. So do people have their calendars with them?
And maybe why shouldn't?
Okay.
Yeah, theoretically.
July, we can set up a period. For what?
The week of the seventh. Yeah, I think that can make that work too.
Right now, I can't say that I can.
Yeah, we're just waiting for the week of the seventh. Our difficulty is something.
And where at? You said you didn't know.
To be the.
What?
To to be determined. Uh we really with the board, we'll talk about the board, uh Board Leadership. We've done that a lot of their forums, their downs. Uh, Law and Form is pretty nice. Um, but it could be here in the district office, wherever you would like to have it. But we'll, as Board Leadership, uh I'll let you do the planning.
And we'll send another.
We'll get the sound of it. Yep.
Yeah, we'll send another report and make sure we can advance the page. Yeah. Okay. And then uh policy review and adoption.
Um, I had a few minor problems with my computer and I read for a couple of hours in my phone. I have not gotten it just was too small. I would like to ask if we pass this on for another.
No problem. No, no problems then.
I only got so far. I got a couple of questions. I don't know if you want to go into it, if we just are going to wait.
No, why don't we just, we wait, everybody gets a fuller review and then we can review and adopt and benefit.
Well, these are procedures, so they don't need adoption. So they're fine. I mean.
They just hang.
More comfortable. Well, then I'll give the the final version.
Okay.
For the procedures.
All right.
Say that again.
So procedures aren't formally adopted because they're administrative procedures. So the board adopts the policy. And then there's the procedure. That's, that's how we do it. So um we don't necessarily need to adopt the procedure, but you know, I'll just want the board to be comfortable and have.
It's a little language. It's just troubling me. Uh like you had one portion where you talked about um part of the accepting of uh what does a migrant condition mean? Migrant condition mean as far as they're the, you're being able to reach out to gather these kids that you feel need special ed.
I would have to look at what proceed.
Okay.
What what that is exactly in the policy.
Um, it was under policy twenty-one sixty-one.
Sure.
And it was page four, bullet three. Uh, I didn't like the way that sounded, I guess. It just hit me wrong.
Having all the children such as children experiencing homelessness or.
In foster care or living in a migrant, in migrant conditions. So their families are migrants.
Families that are migrant.
They migrate.
Migrant.
They they migrate for. So that would be.
Yeah, I know what what it means, but um.
Yeah, the condition does make it sound a little weird.
We have, Victoria, I mean, you can talk about that. We have migrant recruiters that go out and recruit migrant families. So there's a whole process to how we determine if a student is qualified for migrants or not.
But if they're migrant, then the most likely aren't even there.
Pardon?
Because they take a whole season.
No, not necessarily. No.
Oh.
Yeah, they get part of it a little bit.
Like if the trees are really beneficial land, they might move to Quincy. Uh, even though they've made roots and they come here, but if then those cherries ended wait earlier than expected, then they might go to Madawak.
That's what I'm saying.
But but it could be a month, it could be a year.
It could be multiple years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's the league out with, they went on two to three and they went California, Texas.
Some of our families still there. Some of our families, but not all of them, majority don't.
And the the part of that is really about child find that we're going to make an effort to go out. And if there are students, to make sure we talk to the community, we, where at, we know if there's migrant student, students or homeless students, that where it's not like that, that keeps them out of child find process.
Because we want to be really proactive about seeking those families because they might not even know about the services just based on, you know, the situation. So really, it's on us to make our migrant foster homeless students aware of our special education services.
I think the posting of notices.
Yeah.
newspaper. I think that all helps. And I thought you had some really good spots to put your notices.
Yeah.
Um, I absolutely hate the multidisciplinary team name. I just think, man, it just does not sound good to me. I'm sorry.
For every.
Instead of special ed, uh.
Well, MDT team, so there's your IEP team, but there's also your multidisciplinary team and sunshine can explain that a little bit, but I can't. But you, that is part of the sped law too. So this is.
You have to have that name.
Correct. Yeah, we didn't, we didn't make up the T. This is, this is part of.
And the idea is that there's a lot of people coming together that that are looking at what the students' needs are and, you know, is it something, do we put some accommodations in place to see if we can help the student? Do we review the data? Everybody brings something to the team that they know about that student before that.
It's not, it's not student discipline. You know, we talk multidisciplinary. It's, you might go have your, it can't, what's, what is prevailing is a single teacher making an educational program for a student.
Yeah.
So if I'm going to make a child, a change to a child's IEP, I can't do that in isolation. I have to have a multidisciplinary team. So if this child receives speech services, speech therapist has to be there. So if this child receives speech services, speech therapist has to be there. If they have O T or occupational or physical therapy, they have to be there and have notice of the team. Parents have to have notice of the team, the resource room, gen ed teacher have to have notice of this team's meeting administrators, so. It is not just something that in isolation, isolation, so when you're thinking multidiscipline, it's multiple disciplines of the people, the specialists that are at the table.
That sounds better.
But but I can understand where. Yeah.
Is that a shift away from the stigma of special education too?
Well, and the M D T really could be, when students come from our M T S S system where we've been working and trying to support them, we're like, hey, this kid just isn't making gains, then that name goes to the M D T where the school psych runs that team. They bring all the people together and they're like, okay, where's the data, let me see. Have we tried this, have we contacted parents and told them there's a concern, so there's kind of somebody a little bit more um overseeing it and really making sure all the things are, and we're putting all those pieces in place, they're looking at attendance. And all the stuff so we can say this student has had access to an education, has had all the things that they should need and they're still not making gains. Now that might be a re- a cause for referral for special education. Or it's a student who's already in special education, we're like, hey, this kid is in special education and they're getting in trouble all the time in class. Let's pull them back into our M D T and get all the power brains around the table to go, what could we do to help? How could we help the student? So it's kind of like a power health team of thinkers that are like, how can we support kids?
Now, three-year-olds, do you really have enough data to deal with making a decision on? I mean, let's say, for instance, migrant family, they don't have a lot of money, the kids got into position. They just know they've got issues.
Mm-hmm.
So, what data do you have to follow to decide what you're going to do with that?
So with our, with our littles like that, we do, we ask the parents through a questionnaire of developmental pieces that they, of milestones our students had. And then we do um an observation of the students. And then we do some testing of them also, like, I mean, non-verbal tests, right, of to be what's going on. If they come to us and they have a diagnosis and we can see that it's impacting their education. Then that would be how a three-year-old will qualify for special education, but the biggest thing that comes to us are the kids that have already qualified in the program for to three. So they're coming in with a diagnosis of hearing loss as a, as a one-year-old. They already roll into special education and then we at three qualify them, we have to still make sure they qualify, but then we move them into our, our program.
But we don't do any of the testing like autism or.
We don't diagnose.
Yeah, or.
What we do is we look at it, we say we can see that this student has a disability and it could look like autism, but we, that's not, unless they have a doctor's, we don't say that. And it's impacting their education, because sometimes a student can have a diagnosis of autism and it not affect their education, then they wouldn't need the I E P. But if we say, yes, they have that and it's impacting their education, that's when the I P is written. Okay.
That's a great review.
That's inspiring, I'm glad.
Yeah.
That was a good, that was a good, that was a good, that was a good special education model quiz.
We did it. Six twenty.
I think we did.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so uh, and we got muted out, we're just reviewing, so there's no action to take there, okay, any unfinished business? Uh any new business to add? Request for future topics. All right, well with that.
Well, we have a work session with the kiddos.
Uh work session, sorry.
It's gonna be as long or as short as we wanna make it.
Okay.
So we do, was that, yeah, we can go break. You guys are bored, you tell, you tell me.
Yeah.
That's the work session, yeah.
Take a little break and then we'll get into our work session, yeah.
If we're that close to hitting the gap, it's all gonna be over for us. Yeah, oh, it happens, you know, like, we have so many passwords that we all, they're sort of, actually in our heads. Here we go, we're on.
So the point of the work session tonight is just to to get um some days nailed down uh for when we would um do interviews for the next set of board members, so our next year's new board member. Um and then also to cover a little bit about um the the student governing boards, like you guys had advisory votes and we've never really implemented them.
Yes. Two one last night, sorry.
So you guys have advisory votes, but we've never really offered you the opportunity to do that, so we wanted to talk a little bit about how we go about adding that to the board meetings. And and how it would work best for you guys. Um so I guess we'll start with dates, when? Sooner the better for you guys, especially you, honey, you got enough stuff on your. I know I only to put you guys on the spot. But.
We're talking about interviews?
Yeah, maybe board member that would like to sit in on it.
I can always do Mondays and Tuesdays, but in the afternoon, they do have, have no one at in the morning. Um so, Monday I'm back by nine, by ten. No, nine-thirty-ish and then Tuesday I'll be back by twelve, twelve-thirty-ish, so like time to die, it's fine, but it's Tuesdays or um also Wednesdays will go for me.
When is your quarter done?
Until June eighteen.
Wow.
Yeah, I'm a senior, I've done the first week, so.
Nothing's for the app, so we need some time to recruit. Um you know, last year we had flyers all around the high school, we had the Q R code, we had you know, how did that work getting the word out last year? Did that work, just the posters, Q R code, miss be home, kind of running it? And then we could kind of also, Q I A, we've never had a student from, yeah, two. Uh we've never had a student from Q I A on the board.
Yeah, well, I think, again, fortunately some high school students don't really pay attention from the walls, they are there to do what they need to do.
I'm on the host.
Yeah, I was like, sometimes even me, I'm looking in, I'm like, oh, and I, I'm always looking somewhere, so I always like catch them. But all students until it was last minute, oh, why do I could do that? I mean, yeah, it was up on, with social media, like, and a lot of students just don't, um, I also don't think, you know, as much as last year, I think it was a very like a short thing, um. And we've been, I've been trying to get this last year, the comments, you know, they all got table up, uh when we go in during lunch. They come ask questions or the very open, the three open-ended question, they fill it out or just anything. And we think of doing it for every elementary, um just to kind of, like, we, we know they have some of the student, an actual student, uh fortunately I get to this year. Maybe we've just been kind of everywhere as last year to figure it out, um wasn't the only hoping for. I know that I've, we, a little more an effort in trying to get that together, we can do at the high school, at least once a week. Um up until the time is, that is like ten, eight, ten to the interviews. Um I think that would be a little more helpful. Um but I'm not that sure.
Maybe have you guys, if you could, go over and talk to Q I A, we can arrange that.
Yeah, well, kind of just talk to them there and sort it. I had been a couple of the sophomore last few questions about it, um and kind of with no and uh they're looking forward to that. So I, I know some students are very interested in it, but I could kind of give them a a broader like audience and, again, click, Q I A would be amazing, I had a student in Q I A. Um she works with me and she asked me about it, she's unfortunately graduating, but um she had moved last year and she's like, oh, if I saw it and it's always a meeting thing and I'm very intrigued in it, but unfortunately, like, it's already too late, so. Um I think that'd be really cool to get them in, in as well.
And I know they do, they give a student over there that's really interested in just policy, government policy work in general, she's a sophomore who testified in front of, even the, she testified in front of the House Committee on uh on A L E learning. So, um I think there'd definitely be some interest over there, so. Would have, kind of backwards planning this, would May twenty-eighth work for you guys? Maybe that's a Wednesday.
What day in the league?
On Wednesday, May twenty-eighth.
I think so, um.
Casey, do you wanna participate too? What's up? You guys have two board members, do you wanna participate too? Yeah, as long as the date works, the ones work, that's it.
And we're talking afternoon.
Could be the afternoon.
It's gonna be after the day, so.
May twenty eighth.
May twenty eighth. After the school day, so like at three-thirty, starting at three-thirty.
That, you would think, you know, it might be a barrier for some to stay after school. Like, maybe some kids could do it through the day by skipping class.
Oh, yeah. Oh, school should be done by then.
Be done by then.
That's true, you can also do that.
I, I will, I can, I can do them, I can start interviews at one-thirty at the high school.
Just wanna make it a window, one-thirty to.
We could do like one-thirty, we do five-thirty to three, and then that, that would be during the school day.
Yeah.
Lots of nights, well, like from like two to four.
What, what do you think would be best, would, would kids be most likely to, but yeah, I guess two to four, we can do either, right?
Yeah, I think some students would prefer, like, they're already at a school.
Okay.
Who prefer a little time after, so it both, both well.
Okay, I like the, that's a good idea to have.
Just like, you know, for me, like, I'm in the bus, I was stoned, see.
Yeah.
You would, I'd get in trouble. My wife would very excited for picking up. I'm thinking about them, you know?
Yeah.
Okay, cool, and then what would be a good day for you guys to you know, you can lose some, a little, go visit Q I A, so I could reach out to um Ms. Fricks and arrange a visit.
I think that'd be a little question, so, um. Yeah, cause we didn't really start, so we can always figure it out, but I think it's more in the ill, see when he's available. Cause I don't know if he's also working, so kind of what line is scheduled.
Yeah.
And I'll know, I will, we'll get a date. Um even that first or second week of May to to go over, read flyers, talk to the kids at Q I A on it, the students are there too. Does that work for you guys? Right, that's helpful.
And the second part was uh participating. Like, how, how can we halt with advisory votes and make you guys feel like you're more active participants in the board meetings? You guys are always, and you know you're always welcome to ask questions, like you can form through the budgets by all means and.
Yeah, well, I'm curious about that, because um I think I was going to, was, one of those myths I was talking to, and they get the board agenda. I think it's in advance, so they could kind of see what's going on and kind of look through it. I'm always curious, we never kind of got that, so we come, it's a very.
Do me, yeah, I can show you where it's at.
Oh, wow, I have so.
Yeah.
Well, that's a good, uh huh.
Uh yeah, sorry, we all assumed that you were part of the email chain, I'm sorry.
Not to you guys, but it will, but good to know.
That would help. I would like skim through and, and with last year, I was looking right at this, trying to go, where do they get on this, and I thought, I, I was gonna be able to add it all directly, so.
Good to know.
Who can they get it to Friday?
I sent it, I sent it to you guys, cause they don't.
Oh my god.
Friday before.
So it's like the mid-time.
Yeah, they'll be sending it Friday before to you guys.
Oh.
We get that, we have to, that's one way that I can do it. I would not be able to do it the day of.
Well, that, that made it, that was, that made the work session worth it right there.
Yeah, oh wow, I had no idea.
So we.
It's a disparity.
Yeah.
Chad, I would suggest on the advisory votes.
Yeah.
That, when we have most, when discussion's done and you're ready to ask for a vote.
Yeah.
Just simply ask, let's.
Is there any?
We'll, we'll take a student rep advisory vote, all very.
Right, before we would take the official vote, yeah, I was just gonna say, how do we, we delineate the two, that's perfect. I can mess that up, no problem. We'll execute that perfectly.
Yeah. Cause I know when I, um, went with Renachi, when it's sort of favorite, they have this, they had a multiple different thing. But one thing they did have is they have this council, um, it's not exactly the student board, it's a board, but it's kind of this little commitment they have. And they do some advisory boards, uh advisory votes, it's a very interesting way they do it, but I think it was, it was very interesting how they went about it. Um, I think kind of the same thing, they ask students, they kind of deliver on the topic or whatever, it's gonna be, are even in the board. And so if this, one of the students there to have information, they wanna share the board, then they were invited. And so, it was a very interesting idea, I thought, and um, I also liked how they had like we have three, yeah, three of the schools of kids, but it was, it was good, it was a teaching at a new school. Um and they were all on and to show up and give um a feedback or concern or whatever it be.
Okay, I'm sorry, do you mind helping me visualize what you were saying, cause I'm like, I kind of got it, but it didn't, so, is it a motion? No, it's before the motion.
They're not even asked to board me one, it's a advisory group that sits outside, right?
Yeah, they say outside, and they have their own ways as well, and so it's from West Side, East Mountain, Renachi.
Alright.
Um and they all come together and whatever the board's gonna present that week, you know, if everyone, it's what's going on. And when they, who they interested in that committee, then they will be invited to the board to speak on it. So that's kind of how they.
Fail last sentence again.
They get invited to the board to like.
Like sharing what they came up with?
Came up with or.
Okay.
So they have or giving whatever the board presented that week. Um and so far they said it's worked very well, they can get ideas, they get a lot more, a bigger good people rather than two starting kids, so yeah. That's a lot bigger than what we have. Yeah, it was a lot bigger, yeah, um.
Are we interested in growing?
You know, I think, they don't have student board reps though, so they were reaching us like, how do you use that?
Okay.
So, um and I don't know what the leadership structure looks like there at high school, I think I'd have to look at that. But yeah, any time that we can gather more student voice, I'd absolutely be open to it. I can talk to Cory and see how you can, you know, the superintendent there, see how they do that.
The A S B, yeah, seriously.
Well, one thing that we worked really hard and I don't think we probably use, you, we utilized this as well as we probably could is working with, cause the leadership class, it's really, it's about, they have two sections now, so it's almost sixty kids.
Yeah.
And then they also um meet, yes, meet with everybody monthly, one.
Uh that's the student council.
The student council, right, so that's a hundred kids.
Yeah, and that's.
So we have vehicles to get some different ideas and thoughts from some really formal groups that are leading at our high school. It's a pretty cool list. So it's just gonna be a way to, you know, we could work with our new student board reps and loose uh with the advisor and how we could, you know, form by some of that, you know, utilize some of those structures too. For sure.
I see the value of like youth having an opportunity to talk amongst themselves and maybe it was safer. Uh just speak freely. Um I see the value of hear, hearing it as well directly from the youth, um. Yeah, I'm curious to see what, yeah, recommendations.
Yeah, Renachi, they have um the president of the board, he tries to show up every meeting, and so he gets an idea of what's going on before it gets presented to the board, so we can back them up or ask the questions that they're not gonna ask, and so he's really, he's been, he's really involved, he's just really involved. Um yeah, that's something I find interesting, uh again, it may be a little difficult to do here in a way, but I think it'd be nice to have a little more sense of, as much when you can find these online, like this is, okay, I'm good. Yeah, and lots of them are very interested in this and they know, or are curious, like, I don't know how, how do they, they should take, or budgets or those field trips, I had no idea that for a food, or something like that, there's some maybe they're treated. And uh I think if it was more known like this, we even have space to just talk about it or have questions. Um if, like, a little more manageable that way.
Do you guys have regular structures where you do talk with leadership group?
Uh yeah, I do, I, cause leadership was, it's every single day when you're in the class, a lot of students are not in the class, but they still get conversation peers and they try to get in the class or very involved with it, um but we do have, have lots of things, or a lot of kids will come asking a question, and it's, hey, we'll get back to you, and then it kind of, well, I would with Miss Becker or Miss Beham to kind of answer those questions, again, I don't I can't give them an actual proper answer because I'm not, again, I didn't know these things for years, like, actually, um feeling a lot of competition that way, and it's a lot more leadership space, but even then, a lot of students, a lot more should participate in that conversation.
But you do, we do have some structures within the high school where you can do that more formal conversation with your peers, right, about maybe some things that are going on. So maybe the board wants feedback on.
We could, we could work both ways, we could request feedback on policies or changes for things that come up, and then have you guys be the be the conduit for that too.
Yeah, cause there's a city council every month, and so if there's something that you guys know what we talked about, you can reach out, you know, they just want feedback. And a lot of, and we usually like give out papers where they fill out, so we have like, like spots, we have to fill out, as you're listening to what's gonna be happening, they fill it in. And they'll come back to their class, so we can also like give them a sheet of paper where it's kind of, this is what the board's asking, or they want to hear from you, um. And we can kind of arrange. And we kind of arrange all the A S B classes, leadership on how, oh, these students switched out, and they wanna go to the board and kind of give their, their thoughts on it.
Hmm.
I could definitely see the value in that, like, with some of the first readings, most certain policies, like the dress code.
Yeah.
Uh, that was a really good example. Where we would have benefited from having a long pause between first and second reading to ensure we're getting that youth voice in.
Yeah. And so I did, you give back feedback to the U, um, A S B class, I mean, to leadership class, and as well to A S B, and a lot of students, I got a lot of their feedback, but it was just me.
Yeah.
And a lot of students had very powerful statements that I couldn't convey for them, and it would have been here, it would have been, it would have given you a different sense of kind of all the different types of kids that we have in school, and what we feel about it and think, and how it looked like that personally. I think that would, that would have been a really good idea, and they could still, again, have them scanned and.
Hmm.
I, I would, I would say as far as providing their votes, I don't know if that would be something that we would change, because it says immediately before the board votes on each agenda item. The student representatives provide their advisory vote, vote. I don't wanna have like, I don't see a point of them giving an advisory vote if it's just bigger than their advisory vote than you give our vote. I would prefer a spot in there where it says, new discussion may follow.
That's my day.
Is it in the procedure, in the language?
What's that?
In the procedure, the language?
In the procedure, which, well, no, it's in the policy as well, but it's echoed in the procedure.
Well, I think.
So it's the last sentence of the policy and it's also in the procedure. I mean, usually when you take a vote, discussion's over, but if you're gonna, if we're gonna take an advisory vote.
Hmm.
Cause the whole point of that is for them to, you know, for voting on something to approve, and the student board reps are like, no. No, I think, I think that warrants us taking a pause.
Should it say before, before action on an agenda item?
I think the, the last one, immediately before the board votes on agenda item, the student board representatives will provide their advisory vote, and he has, since the end. And you just say, additional discussion may follow the advisory vote before.
So you keep that whole sentence, immediately before the board votes on agenda item, the student board representatives will provide an advisory vote with a pro con or abstain. Additional board conversation may follow.
May follow on before the, before.
Before the vote, based on.
Discussion may follow based on student vote.
Yeah, yeah, you wouldn't take a, you wouldn't take a second advisory vote.
Yeah.
Vote before the final.
Vote for the final board vote, okay?
I like that.
We do work with layers, that just extra. And just say before the board votes.
Yeah.
Immediately feels just.
Well, no, that makes sense, because that's when we're wrapped up with the discussion, and it's ready to look.
Okay. But we're saying.
Otherwise. Oh, let's take a.
Yeah, you're right, that's fair. So clarify.
But I'm also, you know, if there are some of those conversations and the kids are engaging in that discussion piece, right? And asking questions, I'm just seeing about probably throw aspect of it.
See, this gets, this.
As where you would have.
I'd have to look up how advisory votes technically are handled that way, I'm not sure.
Because.
You have latitude to write in the way you want to do.
I'm just wondering what would change, because if we're, if we are, you know, if students are taking part in the discussion, right?
Yeah, they should be, yeah, you're right.
And then you would need to come back to a moment and do it. Uh, because really, I think it's just kind of the board really intentionally, like, you know, you want to, say, I don't know, what do you, what are your feelings, what are your thoughts on this policy and procedure? Were you guys jumping in as part of that discussion? Then once we've heard all that, then the board going, then we do the advisory, and then the board vote.
And you guys can still say no, and we say yes, go back to student council, say, cut.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm just, I'm just.
Yeah, no, that's, that makes sense, yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah. All right.
My only question on procedures, if we could have like the onboarding process added.
Yes.
Cause you want to make sure they feel confident and.
Yeah.
And I would love, and I'd love, you know, in the future too, you know, we'll figure out a time where and maybe that we carve out just a special part of board leadership to bring them in and orientate them as well, I think that would be awesome.
But we do it as a work session with everybody, and that way.
Sure.
Everybody gets to be introduced.
Yeah, and yeah, we've done that in the past, we did that initially, yeah. But I think maybe every other, even board leadership to carve out an extra half hour or some time for them to come in and, and talk to, on a more ongoing, so we have a whole year, you're not getting agendas.
Yeah.
I will do that. Yeah. Anything else guys in your mind about your experience? Just really appreciate you, you all.
I think the orientation would be nice.
A what?
A little, a little orientation for them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you know, this is a district website, it's that you can find on.
You mean as a student, you're not first?
Yeah.
Other websites anymore?
Yeah, I mean, I see what's, she was a lot of help and, okay, this is this, but she was a lot more, you know, reserved and.
Yeah.
I think she can understand that, oh, you, you don't do that, or maybe you shouldn't do that, maybe like this, and so a lot of times, like, what can I think, like, do I say, have I say, or, well, how follows, how do I do this, how do I not, and so. Again, I think also I should kind of know either, just like, oh, well, from what I've been here, it's like this, so I think discussions last year, I learned a lot on my own and how things kind of work, um, so I think that would be nice to kind of go through that with them.
Yeah.
On how things work and how they can go through a thing, um, and just so it's right, like a plan and an idea of how they, they should work their time throughout for.
Yeah, perfect.
Hmm.
I will say that, I don't know, I appreciate what you said, but on the calendar, the social school board, you could actually click the link to the agendas, which is amazing.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, now I actually.
That is pretty awesome.
Yeah.
It's good, thank you.
Oh, I know what that was.
All right.
All right.
Thank you guys.
It would not.
Thank you.
Ends our work session, go ahead and join the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, mate.